Hi, everybody. My name is Dana Miller. I'm Commissioner of Neighborhood and Business Development for the City of Rochester, and I welcome you to our public hearing number two for our 2025 through 2029 Consolidated Plan, and more specifically, our 2025 through 26 Annual Action Plan. This is something that's extremely important to us. The funding that we receive from Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, helps us provide services to folks in the city that are very important. And so each year, we put together an action plan that proposes a set of activities that will be taking place. And we have this opportunity, similar to one that we had last night live here at City Hall. Today's session is on the computer, so that you have an opportunity to participate without having to come down here. So I will turn this over to Henry Fitz, and he will take you through the rest of the presentation. But again, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. And thank you to our members of the public who are with us today, and our city colleagues who are with us, supporting questions and comments, as well as Highland Planning, who's supporting our public engagement efforts. And as Commissioner Miller said, I'm Henry Fitz. I work in the Commissioner's Office, supporting our federal grant compliance and reporting and planning for these HUD federal dollars alongside Rita Rajka and Elizabeth Murphy. And we work with various staff across the city departments to ensure these funds are spent well and wisely and budgeted and reported per HUD requirements. So this public hearing is part of our Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan annual process. And we will be going over quite a bit of information today. First, want to do a recap on the background for the Consolidated Plan and the Annual Action Plan, what that entails. We'll go over our updated proposed citizen participation plan, which details how we engage with the public on these matters, and a summary of our engagement efforts this spring and early summer here. We'll go over our key findings from our needs assessment and market analysis, looking at data for the housing market and economic indicators that inform our work. Next, we'll talk about our updated strategic framework for the 25-29 Consolidated Plan, that's informed by that data and public input. And then that will then, we'll go over our 25-26 Annual Action Plan, how we're budgeting, proposing to budgeting our funds for the upcoming year. Finally, we'll talk about substantial amendments to older plans from 2017, 18, and 1819. And then finally, talk about next steps and timeline for the rest of this process and additional public input opportunities. So for Zoom users and people participating virtually, we want to remind you of some of the key functions using the Zoom platform. You can enable captions using the "Show Captions" button at the bottom of the window to close captioning. You can use the Q&amp;A box at the bottom to submit written questions or comments at any time throughout the webinar. We invite you to do that, and we will try to answer any that we can as they come in. Otherwise, they'll be answered during designated Q&amp;A portions of the agenda. You can also raise your, click the "Raise Hand" button if you wish to speak verbally during the Q&amp;A portion of the agenda, and we will unmute you so you can speak and provide a question or comment. If you're calling in from a traditional phone and not on a Zoom platform, you'll need to dial 9*9 to raise your hand, and then *6 to unmute yourself during that Q&amp;A portion. We can walk you through that when we get to the Q&amp;A. So we'll remind you of that as we go throughout. But again, please, I think the Q&amp;A box is a great option to participate throughout the presentation. So first, let's do a quick overview of the Consolidated Planning process and framework, and talk about, help you understand what your role is as a member of the public in this process. So what we're going, our goals for you are to help learn about these draft documents that are HUD prescribed documents for our budgeting and planning of spending federal dollars. That includes a five-year plan, 25-29 Consolidated Plan, and a one-year plan for the upcoming year, 25-26 Annual Action Plan. Those documents are currently out for public comment. Also joining them for public comment are updates to our citizen participation plan, how we engage with the public. So we want comments from you in response to those documents. And we want you to participate throughout the presentation in providing comments and questions. And we have more instructions when we get to the Q&amp;A portion. Further background, this is all related to our federal funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. We receive about $12 million per year in four different grant streams, CDBG, Home, ESG, and HAPA. These are called formula grants. And that basically means that the City of Rochester does not have to apply for them competitively. We are allocated a percentage of the total national budget essentially each year. And that percentage is determined by our poverty rate, population level, housing indicators, and things of that nature. So it can vary year to year, but it's generally about $12 million. And those are just directly allocated to the City of Rochester. And we just have to go through this HUD prescribed planning and budgeting process called the Consolidated Planning Process. HUD funds can support many activities that are recommended by the city's 15-year comprehensive plan, Rochester 2034. And there's very intentional alignment between our HUD planning process and our general city overarching planning process. So the HUD plan and the Consolidated Plan could support things like neighborhood reinvestment, expanding homeownership, supporting affordable rental units and mixed income development, employment opportunities for youth, and public services that support community development goals. We wanted to make sure that we provided an update to the community about federal funding uncertainty in light of a lot of news that has circulated since the Trump administration took office in January. There's been a lot of rhetoric coming out of Washington about expected cuts to many programs across the federal government. After some initial uncertainty, we were very happy to see that Congress passed a continuing resolution in March that extended HUD's budget for 25-26, and essentially mirrored the amount of funding from 24-25. So we're getting very close to the same amount that we did last year. And that is, that is quote-unquote guaranteed. What is less certain is moving forward, starting in '26, '27, so July 2026. The current proposed budget from the Trump administration would cut CDBG and Home programs entirely, and would consolidate ESG and HAPA programs to be cut by about 15%. It's important to note that this is just a proposal by the executive branch, and such budget proposals always need to be approved by Congress. And so there's, there's a possibility that this does not come to fruition. And it is, and there are, you know, even members of the Republican Party who are likely to oppose this because these funds support communities across the United States of all political spectrums. So we don't anticipate this to be, this worst-case scenario to come to fruition. It may end up being somewhere in the middle. But we don't have any, that's the best information we have at this time. We have to continue to proceed with our planning and budgeting with the best information we have, and we'll continue to adjust and incorporate that information as we get it. Unfortunately, these HUD prescribed planning documents do require us to project how much funding we will get over the next five years. And with the best information we have, we are projecting to continue on a similar trajectory with the amount of funding that we've gotten as of this year. That's the best information we have, and we'll continue to update the community as we get more information. All right, so this is a visual that helps illustrate the overarching structure of the five-year consolidated plan. This is, again, the structure that really guides all of our work and reporting for HUD spending with federal dollars. Every five years, we have to do a five-year consolidated plan. And it has a few major components. First, the citizen participation plan, which outlines how we will engage with the public to get their input on needs and priorities. A needs analysis and a market analysis that go over housing data and economic indicators to help inform our strategies through data. And then synthesizing that information, we put together a strategic plan, which outlines how we plan to address those priorities and needs with our federal funds. That is a set of needs and goals for the next five years. And then those, those goals are then supported by specific projects in each Annual Action Plan that tie back to those goals and what we plan to do for the upcoming year. And so underneath the five-year plan will then be these five annual action plans, one per year. The first annual action plan for '25, '26 is actually a component of the five-year plan. So year one is actually baked into the five-year plan. And then we'll do our next annual action plan, you know, next spring, very similar process. Each annual action plan then also results in what's called a Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, a CAPER. That comes out in September of each year and details, you know, how the funding was actually spent, what our accomplishments were in terms of people served, households impacted. And you can review that. And that is also published for public comment and submitted to HUD. So first, let's talk about the first component, our citizen participation plan. So this is, again, a HUD prescribed document that outlines how we will meet HUD's requirements for community outreach and public input. And there are specific elements that are mandated, such as public comment period for 30 days, posting these documents. That provides transparency to the public, allows the public to provide comments and input on these documents. So that, this all pertains to the Consolidated Plan, Annual Action Plan, our performance reports, the citizen participation plan itself, and any amendments to these documents are subject to public notice, public hearings, and things of that nature. So every five years, we try to review the citizen participation plan and make any small adjustments to potentially modernize our process and improve our outreach and try to make sure we're getting sufficient engagement from the public. So for this '25 update, we are proposing a couple small adjustments. The first is around public notices and how those are issued, just detailing that public notices, you know, will be posted officially on the city's Consolidated Plan webpage, where we post all of our documents. We will issue a press release from the city communications department that will be sent to all local news outlets. We will send the public notice to our HUD email list, which now has over 1,000 subscribers. And we will post public notice to the city's social media accounts. That will be our public notice method. As for public hearings, we are proposing to expand our ability to conduct public hearings virtually via Zoom, like we are today. Until now, we've only been able to conduct public hearings virtually during a pandemic or other emergency situation that limited public gatherings of large size. So this will now specifically allow us to conduct public hearings virtually as long as those hearings allow for the same or better level of access for members of the public. We've generally had about twice the amount of people come to virtual hearings as in-person hearings. So there's, there's quite a lot, it seems to be quite a benefit to holding them virtually. This year, we're doing one of each, and that's just in an effort to compare the engagement levels between the two. So here's a look at our Consolidated Plan process schedule and some of the things that we have worked through so far. We started our six-month public engagement campaign that is being supported by Highland Planning. Started that as of late January with some pop-ups and outreach beginning at that phase. Then we issued a public notice and launched our online survey officially February 25th. Then we held public hearings, March 11th and 12th. One was in person, one was virtual, to gather input from the public on their priorities. Our online survey, again, gathering input from the community on priorities and needs closed March 31st. And then we took all that input that we received up to that point, synthesized it, and it helped to inform our draft plan documents that were posted as of May 12th for our required 30-day public review and comment period. And then here we are today for our second public hearing phase. We held an in-person one last night, and we're holding this one virtually. The 30-day public comment period will then conclude on June 12th, when the city council is holding a third public hearing in city council chambers. And then the plan will be, you know, will incorporate any comments received up to that point and then be finalized for city council approval on June 17th. So zooming in a little bit on our public engagement campaign that helped to inform the 25-26 Consolidated Plan. Again, supported by Highland Planning. Public notice really launched our process on February 25th. That went out to 644 contacts on our email list. We also mailed a large mailing up to over 41,000 households on March 3rd, postcards that encouraged people to take the survey and attend upcoming public hearings. Those were targeted to our highest-needs census tracts in the city. We had our online survey that was open for over a month. We had 366 people participate in that survey. We held five pop-up events at high-traffic locations, such as the RTS Transit Center and Central Library, where over 100 people participated. We held five virtual focus groups with key target populations on specific topics, such as homeownership, operating rental properties, et cetera. 91 people participated in those. And then we, of course, held our two public hearings in March, where 56 people attended. So total active participation of over 600 people in the public engagement campaign. So synthesizing all the comments from the survey and the comments received via other methods through these pop-ups, focus groups, and other engagement opportunities, these were the top 10 needs and goals and priorities that members of the community identified. Number one was safe, decent, affordable housing. This tends to be the number one topic mentioned by community members very consistently. And it was very, it was at the top of the list back in 2020 when we did this process. So that is loud and clear to be our number one priority from the community is affordable housing. We're also here that workforce development and job opportunities, employment opportunities to increase household income was a big one. Homeless services, and particularly mental health and substance abuse services connected to homeless services was on, next on the list. Had comments about road and sidewalk repair, access to affordable childcare, funding to support home repair and energy efficiency investments, funding to support public safety and crime prevention efforts, funding to support assistance for new home buyers, and then youth services. So that was really filled out what would be the quote-unquote "top 10" needs and priorities that were mentioned during this process. It's important to note for the community that our HUD federal funding is not well-suited to address every type of community priority and need. HUD funding comes with a lot of strings and regulations, and literally cannot be used for certain types of funding and activities. So it is possible that some of these priorities and community needs, you know, are better addressed with other funding sources through the city, or they may be better addressed by other local partner organizations who are more specialized in addressing, you know, those needs and goals, you know, such as Monroe County, such as, you know, other partners that we work with closely. All right, next up, shifting to our, look at our market analysis and needs assessment, a review of our housing market data that can help inform our strategies as well. So this year, we partnered with CZB LLC. They are a consulting group that the city has worked with before on the 2018 housing market study and some other efforts. And they've done a fantastic job yet again with our updated 2025 housing market study that we are working on completing in the next couple weeks and will be posted publicly on the city website for your review. So they helped us take a look at key housing market indicators and data that is mentioned throughout the 25-29 Consolidated Plan. Really, really great statistics to help us understand where we are as a housing market, what are our key populations and key needs. And so here are some of these key findings from the study that are also mentioned in our 25 Consolidated Plan. So first, we will want to call attention to persistent challenges. You know, the City of Rochester's greatest challenge is low incomes. We are still one of the poorest cities in the United States by poverty rate, and very low household incomes are, still remain to the primary driver of Rochester's affordable housing challenges. While we do also work on housing supply and do a lot around, you know, building and renovating housing, we're not able to build our way out of our affordable housing issue. The larger factor is low household incomes. We have over 25,000 rental households with incomes under $35,000 a year. And at that income level, it's very difficult to achieve affordable housing in, you know, the market rate housing, generally requires government subsidy. So we also still see that statistics show us that 23% of owners and 51% of renters are what's called cost burdened or spend more than 30% of income on rent. And those households are, you know, very challenged to, you know, meet all of their basic needs when they're very constrained and spending so much of their income towards housing. So while that is some negative factors and that we definitely still have challenges as a, as a community with affordable housing, there are also some positive signals from the data that show us there are potentially some glimmers of hope and improvement for our housing market. Since 2018, median household income rose faster than inflation, as well as rent prices. And we saw particularly for the lowest-income renters, the most improvement for incomes. Our poverty rate, as I said, decreased since 2018. And we also saw that the number of people with affordable housing costs also decreased. The percentage and number of people with unaffordable housing decreased. So those are some positive glimmers that we hope to continue to build upon. All right, shifting over now to our strategic framework in the five-year plan. So we took the community input that we got through our outreach campaign. We took the findings from our data analysis and synthesized those things and determined what are going to be our top priority needs. And you'll see those listed here on the left side of the screen. And this also appears in the plan document that you can review at your leisure. We have eight priority needs. And then under each priority need are associated goals. So how are we going to address those needs with more specific goals? And then under each goal will actually be a number of projects in each annual action plan that will support those goals, including projected outcomes. So encourage you to really review and look at our proposed strategic framework and especially those needs and goals. Overall, it looks very close, very similar to what was in our 2020 five-year plan. And that's because overall, our housing market and our indicators are pretty similar to where we were in 2020. While we've seen some slight improvements, some minor glimmers of hope, we are still largely in the same place that we were in 2020 on many indicators. So because of those factors, because the community input was largely similar, we are seeing a pretty similar strategic framework for the next five years. All right, so that is the, kind of the big picture for the five-year plan. And now we're moving into the Annual Action Plan for the upcoming fiscal year. This is an annual plan that covers the period starting July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, '26. And it outlines what are the actual specific activities for the year and the budgets for those activities, and how they're going to support those needs and goals from the five-year plan. So a big piece of each annual action plan is the budget and how we're going to allocate our grant funding that we're anticipating to receive. This table provides a recent history of our grant awards from these four grant streams, CDBG, Home, ESG, and HAPA. We got our final awards as of May 15th and updated our plan to reflect the final dollar values just earlier this week. That's been posted, the final dollar values in the plan. We're getting overall pretty similar amounts to 24, 25, as I said, within about 2% of what we got last year. And that's pretty consistent year to year, generally speaking. What varies a little bit more is what's called program income. And that's listed in the rows at the bottom of the table here. Program income is derived from loans that we have given out with CDBG or Home dollars. They're given out to a business or a housing development project. And then as those loans get repaid to the city, those repayments are classified as program income, but they still are federal, classified as federal dollars. They still need to be operated with the same restrictions as if they were new grant funds from the federal government. So they still need to be budgeted and accounted for in this planning process. And you'll see those appear each year as program income is part of the budget. So it can vary a bit more year to year, depending on what loans are being repaid at that time. And this year is a little bit of a bigger year for program income due to a few factors. But overall, total budget for '25, '26 But overall, total budget for 2526 will be about 13.4 million dollars. Uh, and that's up about 4% compared to last year. All right, we also want to remind members of the public that our HUD federal dollars, while they are. Incredibly crucial to support many vital community services and activities. They represent less than 2% of the city of Rochester's annual budgeting and spending. We do, the city of Rochester does a lot of other activities. Outside of our federal federal dollars through our operating budget. And a capital improvement plan budget. So we encourage you to participate in the city's. Uh, operating budget. Uh, and capital improvement budget. Uh, public input opportunities as well, provide similar feedback about your. Priorities for city spending and those budgets, which is slightly different process and. Uh, you can find that information on our website, on our budget, uh, section of the webpage. So. In in summary, the 2526 annual action plan. About 13.4 million dollars. That 13.4 million dollars then gets budgeted. To specific projects. Uh, which are listed in in the plan document with dollar values for each. Uh, and there are 30 proposed projects for the upcoming year. This, uh, on the screen, we're not going to go through this line by line, and we'll we'll go through some highlights in a second. Uh, but this is these two screens just show. The list of projects and how the funding is allocated as well as projected outcomes for each project. Again, this appears in the draft plan. Uh, document that you can review at your leisure. And we're going to go through these in more detail in just a moment. Okay, so at this time, we're going to have a question and answer. Period. Uh, so. I'll remind our participants for the options you have for for providing questions and comments. You can use the Q and A box at the bottom of your Zoom window to write written comments. Uh, we'll respond to those. Either in writing as they come in, or we will read those and respond to those verbally with our panelists. If you'd like to speak verbally, you can click the raise hand button. And then we will unmute you and you can ask your question verbally. If you're calling in from a traditional phone and not on Zoom. Um, you can do dial star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute yourself. All right, so at this time, we want to remind folks, these questions at this phase. Please keep them on the more bigger picture, five-year plan. Uh, strategy, engagement. If you have more specific questions on specific programs and activities. If you could hold those to the next section, because we're going to go over specific programs in a moment. Any big picture planning and process questions or comments? Can submit those now or raise your hand. I see no raised hands and no questions submitted so far. All right, so next we're moving into a more detailed review of our annual action plan, proposed projects for 2526. Again, you know, we're encouraging members of the public, you know, to learn about our proposed work. And submit comments and questions. Uh, in response to what's proposed in the plan. And we'll give you instructions on how to do that. So first up, uh, we'll talk about our economic development activities that we fund with CDBG and. Uh, our proposals for 2526. Uh, through our business development division, uh, we operate two programs. Our business development financial assistance program and our neighborhood commercial assistance program. Uh, the business development financial assistance program. Is, uh, more aimed at, you know, larger scale businesses. And supporting job creation and investment. Through, uh, low interest loans and grants. Uh, and then the neighborhood commercial assistance program or small business grants program. That is more aimed at the smaller scale businesses on commercial corridors, helping them to sustain and grow. And helping them to provide essential services to nearby residents in those communities such as food. Uh, important goods and services. Uh, so the larger larger scale business program anticipated to impact eight businesses. And create 35 jobs. At a smaller scale, neighborhood commercial assistance program assisting 20 businesses and creating 35 jobs. Again, business development, you know, priorities are to create and retain jobs, increase investment and help ensure. And provide assistance to businesses to provide products and services to Rochester's community. Also alongside business developments program is our street liaison program. Uh, street liaison program, we work with. Uh, partner organizations who do outreach in key commercial corridors to help attract and retain businesses. That are providing essential neighborhood services. And they provide technical assistance and support to those businesses to access. Uh, funding resources and other services that can help them sustain themselves and grow. Uh, they also work on helping to attract businesses to our commercial corridors and generally working on. The health of the commercial corridor. Um, so for street liaison program, we are budgeting $60,300 of new funding. For 2526. And that will be combined with $29,700 of older unspent unspent funding from prior year. For a total of $90,000 for the upcoming year, and that's a tip that the amount we typically budget for this program. Anticipated to work with. 200 businesses and. The work that they provide anticipate to benefit almost 100,000 nearby residents. Uh, and that's because they're benefiting from a healthy commercial corridor with those essential services. Uh, nearby within walking distance. All right, next to our CDBG rehab and demolition programs. Uh, so these, uh, priorities for these programs are to target areas of greatest need. And try to, uh, capitalize on. Um. Areas, you know, nearby recent investments from the city. And also to help, uh, address child lead poisoning through the city's lead hazard control program. Uh, so we have a few different programs in this category. Uh, first demolition. Uh, we budgeted $1.7 million, anticipate to demolish 45 buildings in the coming year. Lead hazard control program, anticipate to. Uh, budget 400, $400,000 and impact 16 housing units to to mitigate lead hazards. The owner occupant rehab program. Uh, $150,000 budgeted, anticipate to impact 47 housing units to be rehabbed. Emergency assistance program, which provides things like furnace and hot water heater in emergency situations. Uh, and $147,000 anticipated to impact 50 housing units. And then we have a new program this year that is a pilot, will be a new pilot program around energy efficiency. Uh, incentives, uh, budgeted with $500,000, anticipated to impact 25 housing units. Uh, so a total of $3.7 million in this category. 183, uh, units anticipated to be impacted. Next, over to our recreation and human services programming that's funded with CDBG. Uh, almost all of these are youth focused programs operated. Through our Department of Recreation and Human Services at the city by city staff. And it's a support city staff salaries that operate these programs. As well as stipends for for youth in some of these programs that provide. Uh, youth employment and and job readiness. Um, and these programs, you know, have part, the priorities are to promote. Youth employment readiness, career skills, positive youth development, civic engagement and environmental stewardship. Um. One program that is is not youth focused is the the one last one in the row here. La Marquita International Plaza Management, uh, and that is funding that supports. Uh, operation of the International Plaza site, uh, which is. An incredible resource for small businesses and community members, uh, to participate. In, um. In the activities that take place at that site, including cultural programming, uh. And small vendor, uh, support at at the plaza. Uh, in total, we anticipate. Over 12,000 people benefiting from from these programs, most of those, uh, being youth. And a total of almost $800,000 budgeted. From CDBG funds. All right, next. We're shifting over to our housing support and development programs. Uh, of we get through, uh, as we've said, we get four different grant types from HUD each year, CDBG, Home, HAPWA and ESG. Home, HAPWA and ESG are exclusively housing focused. And so a lot of our activities are are in the housing arena. Uh, CDBG being is a little more, uh, wide ranging with eligibility. So first, uh, I'll talk about our CDBG funded housing programs. These programs, uh, have priorities around. Uh, supporting decent housing and suitable living environments for our low to moderate income. Residents through public services and rehab of housing. Helping residents become more stable in their housing. Helping seniors to remain in their homes, uh, helping support landlord tenant education. And foreclosure and mortgage default resolution. Um, and we'll talk about the the programs in more detail in a moment. Here are those programs, uh, funded under CDBG. First, you know, Home Rochester program management, this supports the operation of our Home Rochester. Program which rehoused vacant buildings, vacant homes and turned those into owner occupant. Uh, for purchase. Homes in in wonderful new condition that is budgeted with $182,000. Dollars and those outcomes are combined with a project you'll see later under the home funding. Uh, we have our Aging in Place program, budgeted $60,000, anticipated to support 300. Household, yeah, senior households with minor, uh, home repairs to help them age in place. We have Senior Legal Services, budgeted with $35,000, anticipated to support 30 senior households with legal s- legal assistance, providing. Things like getting a will or other key documents put together. We have our Landlord Tenant Services Program, budgeted with $90,000, anticipated to support 460 households, uh, with. Landlord tenant, uh, education and resources. Uh, and then finally, foreclosure prevention program, budgeted with $95,000, anticipated to support. Eight to households experiencing, uh, foreclosure, mortgage foreclosure. Total of $462,000 and 872 households. Anticipated to be served by these programs. All right, next over to our home investment partnership funded activities. Uh, the home funding from HUD is strictly for, uh, supporting rehab. Construction, uh, of homes for low to moderate income households. As well as home buyer assistance for low to moderate income households to purchase a home to be an owner occupant. Uh, 15% of our funding each year is required to be allocated to what's called. Choto Reserve Community Housing Development Organization. And that for the last over 15 years. Has gone to our Home Rochester program. Which, as I mentioned before, rehabs vacant homes. Uh. And turns those back into owner occupant. First time home buyer homes, uh, through city support. Uh, so that is budgeted for almost $350,000 for the upcoming year, anticipated to impact eight housing units. Uh, we also have our Affordable Housing Development Fund. Which provides, uh. Funding to support larger scale, uh. You know, rental rehab, rental construction and even ho- homeownership construction projects. Uh, we are budgeting 2 point. Almost 2.3 million dollars towards the Affordable Housing Development Fund, which will impact. Over 200 units expected for the coming year. Finally, we have our home buyer assistance programming, providing grants and loans to. Uh, home buyers purchasing homes. We are not budgeting any new funding for this program in the upcoming year, but that's because we have a sufficient balance of older funding. Already on hand for that purpose from prior years. Uh, so we still anticipate being able to serve at least 60 households. For the coming year with the with the prior funding. In total, 200, 2.6 million dollars budgeted with home and 270 units. Uh, housing anticipated to be supported. Next up, we have our housing opportunities for persons with AIDS funding programs. This is a very specific grant source that only supports housing. Uh. Subsidy and services for households with at least one member who has HIV or AIDS. And we have two, only two qualified providers in the community, Trillium Health and Catholic Charities Family and Community Services. Each year, we typically split 50/50 the the HAPWA funding between those two. And we're doing that again this year. They each are projected to serve about 80 households. For a total of 160 people, 60 households served. And, uh. $540,000 allocated to each agency. All right, lastly, we have our emergency solutions grants. Funding. This funding stream is focused on homelessness and homelessness prevention. And we provide an array of services. Through working with our local homeless, uh, community agencies and providers. We also work closely with Monroe County and, uh, the continuum of care. On jointly budgeting these funds. Uh, in a pro- joint budgeting process with them to ensure that we can. Do the most with the limited funding that we have across the community. Uh, these provide services for street outreach. Traditional emergency shelter, overnight shelter. Uh, rental assistance to help people either maintain their current housing unit or get into a new housing unit. Uh, and that's things like and homo- other homelessness prevention activities. In total. We anticipate budgeting $666,000 for ESG services. And that's anticipated to impact at least 350, uh, 1,350. Uh, people through those services for the upcoming year. We're also budgeting $54,000 towards city staff administration expenses to oversee the program. A total of $720,000 for ESG funding. Okay, at this time, uh, we've covered the highlights from our annual action plan budget and proposed projects. And we will have a question and answer. Uh, opportunity here for the members of the public. And I'll en- encourage my colleagues here at the city to help jump in. As we get questions, if they can help answer any areas where they are a subject matter expert. Again, using the same methodology. For our Zoom participants, you can use the Q and A box to submit a written que- written comment or question. Or you can raise your hand and we will unmute you to speak, uh, and provide a verbal comment. Okay, seeing no questions or comments, we will continue to move forward with our agenda. Again. Feel free to submit written comments or questions in the Q and A box at any time throughout the presentation. All right, next phase of our agenda, we need to talk about. Substantial amendments that we have proposed for two older annual action plans. Uh, this is part of our HUD required process whenever we make major. Updates, uh, to an older plan, to shift funding between activities. Or other major changes, we need to do a similar 30-day comment period, uh. Where we post those proposals and solicit, uh, comments or on those on those amendments. Uh, so we are proposing to amend the 201718 plan and the 1819 plan. Uh, this will be reallocating unspent money. Uh. At first, in the 1718 plan, it will be reallocating just over $20,000. From home buyer training to home buyer assistance grants. And then in the 1819 plan, we'll be reallocating. Just under $250,000. from the Home Rochester Program to the, uh, Home Buyer Assistance Program for Home Buyer Assistance Grants. In both cases, uh, this will help ensure that we can spend these funds down in a timely manner. Uh, and we, uh, we have a pipeline of upcoming projects that, that will require homebuyer assistance, grant support. And we anticipate being able to spend, uh, these balances in the upcoming year. All right, we have a opportunity for comments or questions on that substant, these two substantial amendments. Do you have any comments or questions on those? Feel free to press the raise hand button or star, or star nine if you're on a phone, or we'll take written, written comments or questions as well. All right, last call for comments or questions on this one. We do have a written question. How many people are online for this presentation? We currently have seven attendees logged in right now. All right, last call, any other questions or comments on this substantial amendment? All right, moving forward, we will go into, you know, wrapping up and sort of the next steps for the remainder of this process. Uh, so we already covered, you know, where we are up to our, where we are today, the public hearings. You know, the next milestone is, uh, June 12th. We'll have another public hearing held by city council and city council chambers at city hall. And that is also the date that our 30-day public comment period closes as of 7:00 PM on the 12th. So any comments on these draft plan documents need to be submitted by that time to be included in the official process, and they will actually be incorporated as part of the plan, uh, documentation. After that time, the plan will be, these plan documents will be finalized and submitted to city council. And they will vote to approve those on June 17th. And then we will work to submit those plans to HUD shortly thereafter and in time for our program year to begin on July 1st. As for contact information or comments and where you can find additional information, uh, the best resource is our City Consolidated Plan webpage, cityofrochester.com, cityofrochester.gov slash consolidatedplan2025. Uh, that is something you should bookmark if you uh, are interested in this process and want to keep uh, abreast of all the, all the different documents and processes that we do with our HUD funds. That's going to be a key website, includes uh, details about public input opportunities. It's where we post all of our draft plans and final plan documents. There's a button on the webpage for, to subscribe to our HUD email list where, to ensure that you get all public notices for these processes. And we'll post things like the slides from this presentation and a video recording of this presentation there. If you want to submit, uh, comments or you have questions, you can always reach out to myself and Rita Rajka. Uh, here, our email is at hudfunding@cityofrochester.gov. And you can also feel free to mail us a hard copy via USPS uh, at, uh, our city hall room 224B here in City of Rochester. But again, reminder, any final comments uh, on these draft plan documents need to be received by June 12th, 7:00 PM to be included in the official 30-day public comment period process. All right, and, uh, at this time, we'll give one last opportunity to provide uh, public comment on anything we've covered today or, or any questions on any topic related to our HUD funding and the consolidated plan and these substantial amendments and the community participation process. Any final comments or questions on any of those topics? I see no raised hands at the moment and no written questions. And I will just give one final last call for questions and comments. As I said before, you can always submit those to us via email as well. Uh, and we'll accept those. Okay, seeing no final written comments or raised hands, we will conclude our public hearing for today, and I want to thank my city colleagues for joining us. Uh, Highland Planning for helping to support this engagement campaign. And the members of the public for their participation and engagement in this process. That is a key part of the work that we do. So thank you for your time and attention today, and we hope to be in touch with you soon. Have a great day.